Workshop for the Oshkosh Common Council. As with all workshops, this is an input session for council. While the public is more than welcome to be here, there is no opportunity for comments from the public. And I would ask that we stay on task because we would like to finish a quarter of sex to go through very quickly some of the new technology on the dais up there. So with that, more?
Thank you, Mayor, and common council members for allowing us to provide this information to you. As the mayor said, we'll try to keep it fairly quick to start out, to get you through the PowerPoint presentation, and allow good opportunity for the council to ask questions of pretty much a team. We've got a number of working group members in the audience that were involved, as well as staff members. There were a number of meetings that we've had since April 11th. Actually, we were meeting twice a month for over an hour and a half at times. So it was some very good, open, honest discussion. Was not easy discussion, and I think we all grew a very much, a big appreciation for how the events operate in the city, but also how the city supports the events. So, again, I'm going to explain this real quickly going through, and then hopefully have the opportunity for everybody to get their questions or concerns answered. First of all, I wanted to recognize the working group. What we did was looked at all the events that we have in the city, over 100 of them annually. We chose a representative from a large group, that would be David Goldsir. He's the EA Legal Counsel from EA, Air Adventure. A medium event was Brian Stenzel with Festival Foods as part of the Turkey Trot. Small event representative was Lori Renning, who represents Oshkosh Rotary Club, and a number of events from Snowflake Shuffle, Rib Fest, and a couple others. And then we had citizen members, Harold Buchholz, who is also on the Vice Chair of our Long Range Finance Committee, Todd Kaufman, citizen member Jim Osted. And then during the interim at the CVB, we had Kathy Clough, who's a Sales Director, attending a number of the meetings, and then Lynn Peters, who was the interim Executive Director. And then as far as staff members, Trina Larson, myself, and Kathy Snell. And then throughout the process, we had Chief Smith and Chief Franz attend as well to provide some information. The next sheet, just looking real quickly again, we wanted to show you the number of meetings that we did have, again, twice a month from April in through July. And then on August 1st, we met with the city manager, the entire working group, to provide him with our suggestions moving forward. What we did is we established the purpose for the working group. You can read through here, but essentially what we were doing was looking to identify cost of extraordinary services associated with special events, and then provide input to the city manager for consideration in establishing charges for the 2018 extraordinary costs for special events. That was really the focus of our discussion. I know there's been some discussion, you know, I thought you were going to look at the entire special event ordinance. What we concentrated on was the fee side of the ordinance. And the ordinance itself, after being adopted in 2010, has already been updated and amended in 2012 and 2015. So this was really focusing on the fee side of the ordinance. Our first meeting, and again, what I'm going to do is just give you some highlights, and if you have some questions, let me know as I'm going through. Really, the first two meetings, we spent giving the working group a lot of background information. We discussed the purpose statement for the group, obviously established the next meeting dates. And then we shared with them the 2015 and 16 charges for extraordinary services, which were approved the prior two years. We did share with them some event fees and other information from various municipalities, as well as FEMA and DOT equipment rates. And then we also asked staff members, is there out and about or looking on the Internet, to bring any examples that they might find, bring those forward to the group as well. We had a lot of background and discussion on the methodology used for calculating staff charges, mainly the personnel rates and when benefits are included and when they might not. We discussed city staff costs that have not been charged to special events in the past, namely the CSOs from the Police Department, the Battalion Chiefs from the Fire Department, and then the Special Operations Sergeant costs for the Police Department. And we started getting into some of the other charges that, or costs that the city incurs that we have not charged to special events, such as equipment, administrative cost, and This next meeting, again, we focused a lot on the methodology for calculating the city's staff costs, some discussion on public safety costs that were not being recouped, room tax allocation. Trina provided the group with the room tax that was collected last year, and how that room tax is divvied up. And then there was some discussion by the group on, are there other options out there to consider to help fund some of the events, such as a resort tax and a beer tax? And a couple of other suggestions were discussed. And we had to do a little more history and research on those, and found out that a lot of those may be at the state level that we'd have to lobby potentially for, and also found out that some of them may not be viable here in the state. The next meeting was primarily spent with having Chief Franz pretty much doing a question and answer session for the group. As you're aware, the two departments that incur many of the costs are Police and Fire. So the group, the working group, had a lot of questions on how they staff and each department's staffs, and how do they figure the number of staff. And it was a really good, I think, a good eye-opener for the group to hear that a lot of it is dictated by union contracts, as far as call-in time and other things that are included in the union contract. So I think it was good, and I think Tim actually used up his entire hour and a half and could have spent another hour and a half, because it was just some good discussion and good background for the group. The next meeting, we had requested Police Chief Smith, again, be there and answer questions, and, again, go into how his department staffs and determines the number of staff that need to be involved with each specific event. And again, I believe that took the entire hour and a half meeting for the chief to give some explanations. So that was more of a lot of the background information that we had to give to the group, and then we really got into starting to talk about what we need to do. We needed to take a look at the methodology. If you recall, the previous years, we've been using a method that had been determined back in 2010. And so Trina took a look at that, and we had the working group looking at it. And ultimately, we came back with some revisions to that that I think were, that the group has been suggesting that we'll move forward with. We had some further discussion of the room tax, and then we talked about guiding principles. The group really talked about what do we have as a group that we agree that we need to work towards. We included that in your packet, and I think it was very helpful for the group. It kept us focused as we moved forward, and they really outlined what their objectives were in talking about those guiding principles. So we started getting into, after reviewing some of the other municipalities and talking about the different equipment rates that we had looked at, we actually started getting into some preliminary suggestions for the city manager. You can see those listed, and a lot of those we'll continue to discuss as we move forward. We had a lot of discussion on potentially charging for equipment costs, which is not uncommon. And what we had discussed was there are FEMA rates, Federal Emergency Management rates, and DOT, Department of Transportation rates. And during our discussions, we did talk about the FEMA rates being the standard rate that is typically used, as we see with all the flooding and other issues going on around the country. If there's emergencies, those will be what the municipality would be reimbursed if there's something happen here. So in order for consistency, Finance Director Larson really said we should be consistent with that, and I think the both chiefs agreed because of their experience with other disasters. So the FEMA rates were ones that we looked at. And then what we started to talk about was phasing in some of that equipment cost over a period of time. We knew that if we were going to implement equipment costs for these events, we could not put 100% burden on them the first year. So as we had some discussions, we actually suggested to the group that the city would be amenable to the first year, so 2018, absorbing just 25% of the cost, the FEMA rates for the equipment. In 2019, we would add on another 25%, and 25% the following two years, so that in four years, essentially, we would be recouping 100% of those equipment costs. Just going through July 11th, I'm up to here. We did have some discussion about other municipalities and how they fund some of their events and some of their costs. And I think what the group actually saw, and we kind of noticed, is that some of the municipalities we were looking at just simply didn't have the number of events that Oshkosh does. There were a couple of communities out of state that we had looked at and talked about, and they were much smaller, and they had different options for how to charge and how to work with the groups on those. We also discussed a number of other communities that had additional fees and charges and permits that were required. We'll talk about those as well once we get into the suggestions, but I think the group really felt that we didn't want to institute additional fees and permits that the event organizers had to be paying. Some of the other miscellaneous fees were the, you know, discussion of public open green space, such as Opera House Square. When an event is down there, should we be charging them just a flat rate to use green space? An alcohol permit fee, there's a couple of communities that do charge, if you're serving alcohol, a fee to have a permit to do so. And then temporary Class B retailer's license. And again, once we get into the suggestions, we'll talk a little bit more about those. August 1st, we met with the city manager, and the entire group met and presented these to the city manager. And I think, again, they expressed to the city manager that this was not easy. It was a lot of good discussion, it was difficult discussion, it was that sometimes, essentially negotiating. It was almost like union negotiations, saying, "City, we're willing to do this, special events, they're willing to do X, Y, or Z." So ultimately, we did provide you with a copy of the memo that Kathy put together, and the stakeholder group did review this memo prior to us giving it to you and to the city manager. So I guess if there's any questions first, otherwise I'll get into the suggestions.
What was one of the other municipalities that were discussed with the stakeholder group?
We had provided them information, contact websites for the O'Clair, Madison, Washington, DC. There were a couple out of state. Lori Renning actually brought a couple, I think Indiana possibly, where she had seen a couple of items. And then Councilmember Herman had supplied a couple as well, I think the City of Brookfield and a couple others. So we shared those, and then also asked them to keep an eye out on other ones that they might see.
I guess overall, throughout those discussions, was there a point in time where maybe discussion took place about a distinction between the alcohol and the non-alcohol? I know you mentioned beer tax and that, but was there any discussion by the group on that?
We did. And really, the discussion came thinking about when an event comes forward asking to serve alcohol or include alcohol. The police chief really takes a look at that, and he'll add extra staff, knowing that alcohol will be served. So we felt that the city were recouping an additional cost that the events have a burden, because we are potentially putting on extra police staff already. And again, it was another one of those fees that the group wasn't supportive of having special events pay. There were a couple of communities we looked at. Madison is one, I believe, that charges a pretty large alcohol fee. I want to say it's in the neighborhood of $500 or $750. But again, we couldn't support that at this point, or the group couldn't support that, just knowing that the chief ultimately adjusts his staffing, and that's a charge that the events are paying for already.
I would add that, that our staffing probably reflects that as well, you know. And I can tell you a tale of two events versus that an event such as Country USA actually has fewer people in attendance, yet we have more ambulances staffed there than we do at EAA, who has nearly double the number of people on site. So it's just based on the event. So it is reflected in our thoughts on how we staff that, and in our history with the number of calls and incidents that we have.
Any others at this time? Otherwise, we can move into the suggestions from the group. And this is where, I guess, we'd like to have some comments and some input from the council. This was based on some of the information, again, that we had looked at from other communities. And I want to say that by no means, I don't think any of these were suggestions that were unanimous by the group, but it was at least majority of the group that supported these suggestions. The first one, as you know, early on, we talked a lot about calculation of staff hours. And Trina Larson worked very hard on that to come back with some ideas on how the city and the group was in support of not charging staff time, overtime, or double time, including health insurance on those charges when the staff are working. The only time health insurance would be calculated into those personnel costs is during the regular workday. And that was a pretty good savings for the events. And that's reflected on, you should have seen a copy of an example sheet for calculating the police. This was just one example for a police officer. So the rates did go down, and again, it's the discussion centered around health insurance rates are not affected if, whether you're working 40 hours or 45, or over the standard day or week hours. Trina, anything else you want to add on that, or any?
No, I think that's a really good summary. I think the methodology that was used previously by the city was a fine methodology. I think, though, it did leave discussion open. This change in methodology, I think, does close some of those discussions in relation to health insurance. I think both methods are fair and practical.
Moving on to staff costs. The group suggests that all staff costs, whether it's regular overtime, should be recovered for city staffing onsite during events. So that really covers some of the costs that have not, again, the CSOs, the BCs, the Battalion Chiefs, as well as the Special Operations Sergeant from the Police Department.
So with that being said, then Ray, if the tactical units called to an event, and you have to backfill, or may Chief Smith can answer, you have to backfill your shifts. Are we only billing for the officers at the event and not the backfilling of the shifts at the department?
That would be correct. If we're bringing officers in off the street, and we're assigning them to the event itself, then if any hours that's spent at the event would be billed back to the event organizers.
So any overtime accrued by calling in, off duty officer to work a normal shift to fill that, because that officer's on the tac team at an event, we would, the city would be picking up that cost.
City would be picking up that cost.
The next bullet point, the group suggests that management and supervisory staff begin tracking time related to special events. What we like, what we suggested is do it for a one-year period. And the reason for that is the city still does support special events in a big way, whether that's through the CERT committee meetings, or through the number of the departments that are involved with the planning and pre-planning of events. So the city, we can track that and show that the city does still provide services and pretty considerable staff cost to the events. So that's something we talked about and will be working with internally to begin that tracking. The final item under staff costs, consider use of room tax funds to cover the cost of special events sergeant position. We did not get into saying where those funds should come from. We just said there's a possibility, because he is spending the majority of his time, or the officer, on special event operations, whether it's planning or onsite, that the group supported, looking into that.
And Chief, is there something, I guess, that's relevant today?
On the fire side?
In regard to a special event?
Special operations sergeant?
It's, would be split between two. We have a Battalion Chief of Special Operations that regarding, like with EAA, the airport firefighting operations, that meets with airport staff and them. And then our BC of EMS usually is the person that meets most of the time, but not necessarily just, that's not what they're one, not a dedicated person to it.
So my question then, follow-up for Trina, is would that be a similar opportunity on the room tax to try and offset some of those folks' time?
The one thing we are hoping to move forward with is the billing of the Battalion Chiefs. This is something that hasn't been done in this current year and previous year's practice. However, those hours have been tracked, so we would like to be able to bill them on an hourly basis for their event time onsite.
And then somewhat, as Ray alluded to, that we're going to be, we haven't been tracking the time regarding how many hours we spend necessarily at CERT meetings, at planning meetings outside of those hours, and that, that's something that we'll do, just so we have a better idea of what time commitment that we have. And just so that we can share that information with you on what we are, the amount of time and the value of that, that we are spending on events that we aren't billing for.
Trina, how would that reflect in the room tax, then? Would you just take it out of the room tax for that particular month when the event occurs? Or would you be looking for a separate fund for it to be drawn out of for event? Did you talk about that option at all?
I don't think they got into that level of detail.
We did not.
The real issue, the real issue is, do we have a sufficient room tax funds to do that? It's all well and good to suggest it, but we have to take a look at that. A lot of it's going to be based on continued room tax growth, to the degree we get into room tax growth. We've got some capacity to do that. But our room tax dollars, as you'll, all you have to do is look at the most recent budget, our room tax dollars are pretty committed already. But it was something that, to the degree we have some growth in room tax, I think it's something we can take a look at, but...
And that by law can be recovered through room tax? I mean, we're not circumventing the law, any...
No, in fact, we exceed, we exceed the requirements of the law at this time. But that's at least, at least the point that I thought was made by the group is, that's arguably in support of special events and things that generate room tax. So that's a legitimate, it would be a legitimate cost. There's no question in my mind it'd be legitimate, just do we have enough of it?
Just for clarification regarding the Special Events Sergeant, I bet you, it is a good, a good calculation that 92, 93% of his time is spent on special events. The only other responsibility he has is to supervise CSOs and school crossing guards. And those are very, very small parts of his day. Typically, I'll find the Special Events Sergeant, every time I see him, he's working on a plan for another event that's coming in. That's his, that's his job. He makes everything work.
Arguably, in that case, 92% of Sergeant Stenson's time could be allocated to room tax if we have enough.
Okay, moving on to the next page. We get into the equipment costs, and a couple of cleaning up items, I would say. One is in the Streets Department, as we talked about, a delivery of barricades and some other items. In the past, the Streets Department would charge a flat delivery rate of $27.50, that included delivery and pickup of whatever those supplies might be. Other department staff are actually tracking their time, so it's adequately tracked and then reimbursed. So the group suggested that the Streets Department would do the same. And at the same time, they suggested that the city should look to increase the rates that we charge for barricades and other items, that we're getting out of that business. There's private businesses in the area that provide those street signs and other items, and they felt that it's an area that we could increase our costs. If they still want to go through us, we're getting more back, but it might encourage them to use outside sources versus city resources.
Chief? So do we have any liability there? If they're blocking streets, and it's not our signs and our barricades and things, does that put a liability back in us?
We set the signs and barricades, we're talking about specifically the usage of the actual physical barricades themselves. We charge a rate for a barricade, maybe seven, I don't know what the actual dollar amount for a barricade is. We set the barricades when there's a parade or there's something going on. So the actual setting of them would be on us.
Okay.
And then the same thing with signs, because like, if it's no parking, it has to be, we have, the city has to set the signs, correct? They can't be by, they can't be done by a private vendor?
That's correct. That's correct. In order for it to be enforceable, we need to make sure that it's in the proper place.
Those are usually in the terrace.
Yes.
Okay, moving on with the equipment costs. Again, we talked about the FEMA rates, and going with a slow recovery, which would give the event organizers a number of years to plan their budgets for that slow recovery. Utilities?
I'm sorry. Was it pretty much the consensus of the group that that was palatable, that was acceptable, that gradual phase in?
That was palatable, yes. There was a lot of discussion about FEMA rates and what they were, and if we should use those, and we had a long, a number of discussions on that. And, again, being consistent with other ways that we would be recouped from, if there's emergencies or anything else that goes on, we really said the FEMA rates. So again, it wasn't unanimous, but the consensus of the group was, yes.
I think it's important to point out, if, as a city, we choose a rate schedule that's outside of FEMA rates, if we had an event such as the floods that occurred years ago here, and we went to the federal government and said, "We need reimbursement," they would not use FEMA rates, they would use whatever rates that we chose to use.
And one of our goals is, as part of that staged implementation, is really to allow the events for planning and budgeting, hopefully logistically, by giving them a four-year implementation. That's something they can work into the planning and the cost structure of their events, and help them plan better for that.
The other item that we got into is utilities, and the group is suggesting that utilities should be charged back to event organizers for large multi-day events, and anticipated larger utility usage for single-day events. We wanted to give you just a little rundown on the last page, as far as some other things that we did have some discussion on, various charges or discussions. Again, going back to the open green space, mainly Opera House Square and a couple other park spaces where people might come in and have an event. Again, the group wasn't, the consensus that we should look at charging for those spaces. Again, charging for additional fees for events selling and providing alcohol, we already had that discussion. The group was looking at, can we charge more for Class B retail licenses? We found out that under state statute, that amount can be not more than $10. An item that I think we are going to be working on closely as staff is developing methods to track revenues expenditures related to specific events, so we know exactly what X event is going to cost us and what revenue is coming in. And I know Trina can talk to that a little bit more, but I think there's ways that we can do better jobs of tracking those costs and revenues. And then, a lot of discussion throughout the entire process of having, providing information to the city, as well as the community, on the economic benefits to the community by all these special events, versus the inconvenience that some of the events place on the community and residents. We know that these events bring people into the city and bring economic value to businesses, hotels, and all those things. But at the same time, we had citizens on the working group saying, "I try to leave town, or I avoid certain parts of town when these events are there." So a lot of discussion, pro and con, on those, and that was some of the heated discussions that we had, but it ultimately said, "These are some of the things that we'll have to disagree on, based on your point of view." You know, again, we respect all the events and what they do for the quality of life and the economy of the city, so...
Yeah, while I agree that there is an economic benefit to the community, that economic, much of that economic benefit, quote unquote, does not flow directly to the city, related to the services that we, that we provide. Well, yes, they are, you know, many of the organizations, I mean, the organization that I run, you know, that I'm the coordinator for, raises money for the Domestic Abuse Agency. So many of these places raise money for these services, but, you know, we pay, we also pay our fee to the city to pay for the expenses that we force the city to incur. And I think at a minimum, that this should be, whatever the structure is, it should be revenue neutral, in that the fees, the revenues generated for special events should cover the costs of the special events.
Was there any discussion amongst the group acknowledging that they were not, or that some events are not charged that do use open either green space or streets? I mean, was there any, I guess, acknowledgement that that is a type of support or partnership by the city providing the space at no cost?
We did, when we had that discussion, and a couple of those events did come forward. We also had discussion of some of the smaller events, the walks and runs, that maybe had no cost in the past, and now if there's a CSO crossing at a roadway, that they're going to have some type of a cost. And so that's where I think it's really come down to working with them on their logistics. Is there some way we can do it? Is there some way we can do it in a park, at a school track, or around the block where you're not crossing streets? And I think we heard that very loud and clear, and just having the gentleman from the Turkey Trot, he came up with some ideas on how he can get equipment somewhere else other than coming through the city or somewhere locally. So a lot of those discussions started, and we did have that discussion as far as, yeah, the city does have a lot of spaces that are essentially free to the public.
Is there any discussion about alternative to police and fire at times? Because of, you know, let's face it, we aren't going to be able to add a lot more police officers or firefighters to our budget, and yet they pretty much work nonstop from every day to month, you know?
There was, there was for both chiefs when they're there, and I'm going to have them address it, because I think they do, you, you're open to that, but there's some stipulations.
As far as police services go, we have a responsibility to the community as a whole. And, and I'll speak specifically to EAA and some adjustments we were able to make, at the suggestion of EAA, as a matter of fact, allowing the State Patrol to, to manage some of our interstate intersections. There's not a direct impact on our community, but if we have a, an area that our citizens who aren't a part of the event are being impacted, we want our police officers to be the one that are having the discussions with them. So we need to be policing those areas. It's our responsibility to do that to our community. As far as security goes, when there's an event going on, many events already have security out there, but what they do is they call the police. There are security monitors, so they call the police. And we, we need to be there in order to answer those calls for service. They don't have the ability to arrest folks.
But going to SOTUS stage, chief, because they changed the logistics of their plan, you were able to reduce staffing?
Yes.
Just based on their changing of logistics? In addition, they had some, some of their own security there as well.
And, and in a similar vein, as the chief was stating, that there are events that, and we had some experience with this in the past, where they would contract with an ambulance service to provide a standby service, but that was literally what they did. And when anybody required transport, then we were called to transport from that. And our whole concept in how we staff these events is that, if we have an event where we're taking an ambulance that's normally providing service for the city, we want it to remain doing that. If an event is going to draw that ambulance away greater than two times, you know, in a operational period, we think that we should be providing that standby service. So when we do that, our ambulance that's standing by also transports. You know, and then if we have a larger event, we can bring it in. So from that standpoint, there's not a lot to gain usually when, when they do that. So the, the issue for us more so, and it's got much, gotten much improved over the last two years here, over time, is lead time and being able to schedule these for our people. And, you know, that, you know, having one or two weeks notice in the summertime, that now you have to work this weekend, you know, if we can get these events planned out ahead of time, which we're doing much better for that, and, you know, in April, we can get out our special event schedule, well, then our folks can look at their vacation and work schedules and, and spread their time out that they're working these events. And that's probably the, a better issue, they're willing to do it, but scheduling is, is really the, the big issue, you know, for them more so than, you know, if we can do that, I, I think we can work things out.
That was the end of the discussion items. The one item that I wanted to touch on was we, we gave you a draft or a snapshot of some of the equipment costs and the fee structure that Kathy's working on. And again, this is based on some of the information that we received from other communities, is to have essentially a, a document that we hand to them, saying, "Here are the fees and charges that you could expect if you need these services, or if you need these park facilities." And again, this is not all-inclusive, especially when you take a look at the third page, I believe, where we just started listing some of the equipment. We get into ambulance, police vehicles, all-terrain vehicles, pickup trucks, and so forth. What we need to do is go further into the FEMA rates, or we have to say on this, this policy, that if other equipment is utilized, the FEMA rate charges will incur to the event. But the FEMA rate, I printed off the news from 2017, it's about a 10-page document, gives you everything from augers to backpole, backpack blowers, all the way down. So it's very inclusive. So when we come forward, we'll have probably more equipment listed on here, and, and then have some disclaimer that if there's other equipment not included and it's used, we would charge for the FEMA rates.
Just out of curiosity, some special events in the Fox Cities and around the country now are starting to have more of these kind of food truck rallies and things like that. Do we charge an extra fee if there's a food truck or a mobile food vendor that's outside, I guess, outside the vendors that are within a particular event?
We have a mobile food vending ordinance, and that would come into application for any special event. The only time a food truck could be allowed in that special event area is if they get the approval from the special event organizer. So I'll take Farmer's Market, for example. If they have the entire area from Algoma, four blocks up, whatever it may be, that's restricted for their vendors. Same thing around Opera House Square, for events that take place there during the, the noon lunch, we, they are not allowed to be adjacent to those special event areas. So that's addressed in the mobile vending ordinance. If they get permission, yes, they can be included as, in that special event.
Within that geography, but not in the periphery?
That's correct. Yes, it's, it's detailed in that mobile vending ordinance. So as far as staff, we support the suggestions from the working group, and so what, what we are looking for is if there's consensus from the, the council or direction to move forward with these suggestions, what we would start doing is, again, finalizing the fees and charges document, and then plan to bring forward that information to the council over the next month or so, I would say, during the budget process. Council, what do you?
It's your pleasure. I would say move forward with putting together the fee proposals. I just have a question related to the, I'm looking at the prep charges for ball fields and that. You know, we're talking about, and I assume these charges could change, because, I mean, $15 for preparation. Is that covering the full, the, the total cost of having to prepare that field? I mean, it's got to, you know, baseball diamond's got to be dragged and lined and...
That is actually a fee, um, what we would charge for our seasonal staff down there. We typically try to do that typically on a weekend, I mean, is when a tournament's going to take place, so we schedule a seasonal staff member, so that does cover their cost of benefits.
Okay.
That's where that fee, or that dollar comes from. Again, it's helping out the special event, not having to overcharge by bringing in a full-time staff member.
Cheap when you compare it to what you pay for a Zamboni.
I agree with the mayor, I think we, you know, moving it forward through the budget, so that we, you know, I think we have a good cross-reference of, of event people involved that were involved in this, planning and talking, and chiefs both got their input in, in that. So I think it's, it's a lot of good work, and I think it, it cleared up a lot of, we really don't know, where's the city going to go? And so I think that's cleared up a lot of things, and I appreciate all those that participated, because a lot of meetings in a short period of time.
Yeah, this is exactly why we requested a working group on this, was to get their feedback on this and, and listen to what they had to say, since they're the ones that are dealing with this more often than we. Echo what Deputy Mayor Herman says, and I will, will look forward to the new fee schedule.
And it addresses the timing as well. There were, it sounded to me like a, a great number of the special event organizers were concerned of how quickly they were going to have to adapt their budgets, and so this seems to be more the generous that they've been over the four years.
The one thing I would add and would hope for is, the one thing we did discuss in our talks last year, and with our special event group, it's important for the groups to be able to plan. So the one thing I would like to encourage is if we can adopt these rates before we bring forward the budget, because that gives us the foundation to build the budget. And so if the council would be agreeable to that, to me, it would be important that we can bring these forward, have them adopted, and distribute them to our groups, so they can begin to start planning and knowing what their costs will be in '17.
That makes a lot of...
I would support that.
In '18.
Excuse me, yes.
Time does fly.
When you're in '16, '17, and '18, it's overwhelming.
Now's a good time, because we're towards the end of most special events. There's still quite a few odds and ends ones here towards the end of the, the year, but they're well planned out, and it doesn't pertain to them, so I agree. I think it makes sense to go ahead and, and get it to the council to be approved in the next council meeting or two, if it can be done that quick, so that they can start planning for '18.
So, yeah, city manager, can we get that on an agenda here in the next?
We were, we were waiting for you to say that, so yeah, that, the whole idea is that if we can get this approved by council, because this is a resolution, this would be approved by the single action, so the 26th, and then we would have those numbers that we can incorporate into the final budget numbers, because you're scheduled to get the budget handed to you the, the evening of the first council meeting in, in October.
Okay, if there are no further questions?
Yes, just one. Kathy, would, would the new fee structure then be given out to those events that you're already working with, or would they only get this if they apply for an event? Are we going to send this out to people that we are working with currently, or will they only get the new fees when they apply for an event?
We would be getting that information out to them.
This will get posted on our website.
And it'll be a part of the council.
New events could also see that on the website, okay.
This is, this was a projection on 2017. As we're finalizing the numbers for the budget, we're going to be putting budget assumptions in there that we are expecting for 2018. We've got to figure out what are going to happen with benefits, what are going to happen with wages. We did want to talk to you tonight, we have closed session for collective bargaining. That'll kind of give us an indicator of where we, where we want to go as well. We can't, we can't predict what'll happen with collective bargaining, but it gives us a rough idea of where we're going. So we'll be able to give you some, some reliable numbers as we give that to you.
If there are no further questions, I'd like, I think we'd all like to thank the special events team, the working group that put a lot of time and effort, what we're asking for and looking for, so...
Mr. Mayor, I'd be remiss, Davey, we're on the wrong side of the roof, I couldn't acknowledge you. Dave Gelsner from, with EAA, had asked that if he could, at a future meeting, make a presentation to council. I'd mentioned that at a previous meeting, and I thought, given the fact that we didn't have a, a tourism breakfast this year, there's oftentimes discussion about the benefits of tourism, the, the economic impact of tourism, and maybe we could do a presentation with both the CMB as well as EAA individually, because they are by far our largest special event, and just give you a rough idea of what that is, because there's certainly an economic impact, not necessarily directly to us, but certainly, it, it does benefit the economy, and they have a great impact for us. And Mr. Gelsner's hired, somebody from UW Oshkosh, who's done a study for that. You, you were provided that study last week, so we'll schedule that for a future meeting.
That'd be good. All right. Thank you all. It's at 6:00, so if we could all go, show you very quickly our new technology.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening...